Before you approve the agenda, we're gonna strike out number 11. That's not quite ready.
You get a motion approved, do you get an except for 11?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
About the minutes, gentlemen.
I did not see anything that I thought needed correction. But it'll be up to Tracy to find it.
Front page, Haley. Okay, uh... The one where Tippet moved Volt's second to open the public hearing? Then go down four lines where it says fix, it should have a D in there, right?
Fixed, yes. I'll fix it, of course, send it off.
That's the only correction.
Do you?
Yeah, that is fine. I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, minutes approved.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye. Uh, how about the liquor license, can we jump on that right away? Traveling tapster.
Traveling tapster.
Everybody's got one.
Everybody's got one?
Yep.
For Tippy Crowder.
Everything's in order there?
They've gotten plenty of those five-day ones.
For a year?
Nope, five days.
Five days.
May 23rd to May 27th.
Yep, there it is.
So can I have a motion approved?
I'll make the motion to approve the, uh, liquor license for the Traveling Tapster LLC.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye. I guess somebody will jump right into the bucket. 9:05. Haley, would you point out some of the things that you changed?
Yep, so I went in and went through everybody's departments for the reestimated. Um, I did like a year-to-date, so it was through April. Um, I adjusted all their... Mainly like a lot of them for the insurance. If departments budgeted for family, single, um, I guesstimated, you know, because we had two months left, so I reduced a lot of those reestimated amounts to be pretty more, much more accurate. Um, I reduced all the spending for the departments that gave you the reductions, the 2.5%. Myron and I reduced the transfer amounts from general basic and rural basic to the secondary roads fund. So I gave you all those figures with those amounts, how much that affects to reduce the levies by those amounts. If you wanna reduce it by the full reductions. It'd be on that third page. Because in a mo- in your resolution, if you go to approve that, we have to list out the tax dollars in per fund. And so I have a couple different scenarios on that resolution ready.
Haley, can you tell the people here what ended up after you went through levies after you went through?
Yep, the amount, how much I reduced them by. So the original budget that we proposed, which we can't go above that, but we could still reduce it as of last weekend today. So our general basic levy, we were asking for 3.39740, and the maximum allowed on that is 3.5. The general supplemental, we asked for 2.34294, and then the rural basic was 3.83421. So with those changes that we reduced, we proposed to reduce the general basic down to 3.33570. General supplemental, 2.33396, and rural basic, 3.73963. Granted, we still will have the EMS levy that was passed for 68 cents, and then the county also has a debt service levy to pay for our tower project. And so those have to be the same as last year, so... So overall, that would be a reduction. The countywide levy... If the board so chooses, I guess, it's up to them. There's a .07931 reduction.
When I'm comparing the original budget that you submitted and the one you just gave me this morning, I can see where you reduced, because the numbers have gone down, except for in non-program current. Do you know what that is?
That would be some of our tower project, and...
So that's... You're estimating $475,000 for next year?
We still have the tree grant finishing out, correct? Yeah, because we only did partial this year.
How much of that $475,000 is the tower part?
Do we think we're gonna pay it this year, right?
I thought the project was done.
Maintenance fee.
So this is maintenance?
Yeah, that was...
So what's maintenance going forward on that tower project?
Two forty a year.
Two hundred and forty?
Two hundred and forty-three, I believe, next for this year, and then like year five, it's gonna be like 450-some thousand, too. It's gonna be, for 10 years, we have maintenance project.
And is that all being funded out of general basic?
Right now it is, yes, because hopefully next year, we're gonna split that with the E911 we've talked about. But right now...
Did you also see where they're proposing legislation to reduce what you get for E911s?
I know, yep. So hopefully, that's something I wanna talk to the E911 board about, but currently, they were not... They didn't plan for it this year, right?
No. See, the problem with that, though, every day, there's less landlines in the county.
To collect on which those have come down.
They collect surcharge off of cell phones, don't they?
Yes, but it's not as much.
You don't get as much as we...
They'll increase it.
I hope so.
I don't.
I'll make one statement on that project, that it made our lives so much easier, because there are not near the dead zones in this county that there used to be.
Can you communicate between each other?
Across the camera room.
Yep. Used to be, I could not sit at the Watkins Corner and call back to the New Hall Fire Station on a radio. Now I can. What's the maintenance entail?
A quarter million bucks a year, he said. It's supposed to happen in July, and I'm gonna, one of them, one of the persons gonna be involved in it. They're gonna check every single radio in the county to make sure it's working up to its ability. And every vehicle. The only thing I can't, don't under, quite got figured out, like, are we gonna go to New Hall and check the fire trucks and first responders vehicles there? I'm hoping that's what they're gonna do, that way it don't disrupt the business in the county. You know, they go to secondary roads, they check the radios there, the sheriff's department, they check it there. I'm hoping that they don't wanna have it where everybody's gotta bring their vehicles in, like, one certain spot in the county and have them looked at. And I don't know what all the details on checking them.
How many radios are there?
Hundred and eighty...
Plus handhelds.
Yes, 186, 189 radios.
That seems like a lot of money just to do...
Throw handhelds, yeah, it's 500. Probably 500 total, and then there's, uh...
All the schools got them.
Schools got them.
Virginia Gay's got one.
Conservation, health department.
The radio maintenance, I used to, they just go check the output of repeaters, and they don't check mobile units or handhelds, so...
No, they check them all the...
Their contract says they'll check every unit.
Do they know that going into this contract, that we was gonna be getting this...
Bill every year for this?
Yes.
Originally, I didn't, we talked about doing some cost sharing with other counties. Like, one county would file the equipment and the county would store it, but that changed, right?
Pretty well, they like Iowa County, I know we share our tower down between, uh, Belle Plaine and Norway. Helps them to get good signal down at Iowa County, and we also use their tower down there to help us, like, around Hannah Lake area, where it's low.
And that's just shared, it's not a rental agreement or anything?
Nope, nope. We have equipment in their buildings down there, and they have equipment in our buildings down there. No money changes hands.
And then if there's any, uh, software updates, they're covered in the maintenance agreement.
Okay.
You knew I would. On your service area zero, you guys wanna go to that page?
That's on, like, towards the very end.
I have a real concern when I'm looking at fund balances. And under your general fund, which funds most of your services and activities, you have a minus $647,000 for unassigned fund balances, and that's what you use primarily. In fiscal year '24, you had 8.8 million. You reestimated to have 13.5 million this year, and a minus $647,000 next year. Does that concern you like it concerns me?
What page are you on?
I can tell you it's service area zero.
It would be page 13 on your state budget. And some of that, like the CDVG, we get reimbursed after the fact.
You found it, Tracy? Page 13. You'll see non-program expenditures and dispersments at the top. Service area zero.
So like, under the other column?
And then down line 35.
Okay.
So you see that minus $647,000 for unassigned?
I don't have a negative. Let me see which one you got. Did I print you one before I...
Okay, did you not give me the updated one?
Oh, that's, that's because I went in and changed, I need to fix that up here.
Well, that concerns me. So you just got it in the wrong one?
Well, I have to go in and put the different unassigned amount up here, and it'll take that away. Yeah, I think I can fix that by just moving this amount. Because I was still tweaking those ending balances, so whatever that difference was, it was... I'll show you on here. I was just making sure before they adopt it, because I still have it in draft mode.
You wanna explain to them what you explained to me?
Yes, so when I go in and adjust, you know, what your balances are, like, if you, the tax dollars are coming in, it affects my ending fund balances here. And so now that we're doing some changes, I have it back in draft mode. So why don't you guys tell me what amount we want for the revenues coming in for the levies? I can go in and fine-tooth this down in here with those unassigned committed funds and unassigned accounts for unspending.
And that's why it's not printed on the copy that we have?
That's why it has that negative on that one part.
Got it, okay. Would you happen to know what that figure is right now?
Okay, that cleared it, Jill. I just had to go in and adjust that restricted balance with the difference. Because we have committed in general basic the 647, rural basic 47,000. If you recall, that's when we do those end of the year, when people have carryovers. It's like the sanitarian with the vehicles, we have equipment costs, that kind of stuff. And then 50,000 is committed under capital projects. Yeah, Jill, it cleaned that out.
So what did you end up with, an unrestricted balance in general fund?
Would be... We're at the end, right? Six... 647,000 is committed. Restricted is 2.588604.
And so for unassigned?
I don't have any, it's zero.
So we're gonna be starting out a year with a zero, or next year, ending with no money that's not committed or restricted in the general fund. Which I guess plays into you thinking that you're gonna be out of money.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I've always put it in that way on the state.
Well, I think that's just an issue of where she needs to put a good right period. That's easy to do, you put your total in there, and then kinda forget about it until the end. And then done that.
Yeah, yeah, that one spot made that change. It's if, we're talking about these down in here. It's all formula-based on the state program, so...
All right.
I just wanna make a couple more comments. Thank you, you're welcome. I still have some concerns with how much our expenditures have gone up. And in looking at this, you know, I asked about the non-program, which was 171% increase. What you're telling me is that maintenance cost? But there's a couple of other service areas that have got some pretty major increases over the last few years and continue to, and I'm gonna let you know, I'm gonna be looking at those this year. So it's got to be back next year. But I also wanna comment, Haley has been really good. She knows what all this is, how it all ties together, and you ask me what you could do different? What I would do different, if I were you, I'd start this in January next year. And maybe you have to go through it two or three times before you have your public hearing. But that doesn't push her, and that's what's going on this year. When you do a 2.5% reduction in the last week, I don't know if you guys realize what it takes to fix a 15-page budget by 2.5% in the Republican Party. So that's my, she knows what she's doing. Pay attention to her.
I will say, this board has been diligent in doing their work, though, too. You guys have sat here and we've went over things more than previous boards, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
I taught new elected officials, supervisors about budgets when I was auditor. And the one thing I told them was, listen to your auditor.
We did a little of that, too, didn't we, at the very beginning, so...
I'd like to do it again. Yeah, I'll say it's gonna take me a little more.
I encourage them to, um, pay attention to the ICE Act and the legislations, and that all affects us overall, so...
All right, back at it, gentlemen. Okay. What do you think? I'm leaning on the reduction and the third page that she had printed out.
So as most as you can reduce it by, with the transfer amounts, too.
Yep.
That's the third page?
Yes.
It's mostly pretty good, I like that one as well.
So here's that resolution for adoption, if you wanna save the amount for taxes on those funds, that would be those amounts. Isn't that right here?
Okay. All right. What do you wanna make a motion on this?
Is this what we read, why do we use an ounce?
Yeah, read him a little. Okay. That's the third page.
Okay, I'll make a motion for resolution number 25-26, the adoption of fiscal year '26 county budget with the following, uh, amounts. General basic, $6,185,331. General supplemental, $4,327,822. Rural services basic, $4,468,561. Debt service, $799,542. Voted emergency medical services at $1,260,912.
I would second that motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna call by vote by name.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye. Miss Anderson?
We have a budget. How many you want, Haley?
Um, two of those.
Okay.
I can get you that here in a little bit, and I'll make sure you sign the back of the budget, too.
Do you need three signatures on that, or just one in the back of the budget?
That one's just the chair.
I mean, he's not personally responsible.
Ben?
So it should be pretty quick. Um, basically what this is, is the DVR for the sheriff's office for their camera system. Current camera system is only 16 terabyte, this would extend it up to 48 terabyte. Um, we've talked about with the security committee and from their recommendation, they approved the, uh, the upgrade for it. The issues with the current system are, is there's times where we're migrating servers and workloads between different servers, and when we are doing maintenance on some, on one of the servers, and we have them all running off of one, essentially, there's issues with video delay and lag, and we can't really have that in the jail, especially when we're trying to do maintenance on the servers and upgrades and whatnot. So basically, what this does is moves it into its own, its own dedicated system, essentially, which then that has, uh, the time involved, the court has the time involved with them migrating it and setting it up and making sure of any issues. And then there's a few things that I think were not fully completed with the other company that did the DVR setup, so they're gonna look into those and get those working, too, for us.
So does this come out of your budget?
Um, I think we, Haley, or we have the, uh...
Some out of the local option sales and service tax?
For that, uh, security committee or security line item. I don't think there's even been any activity in it this year, so...
And this'll only be at the jail, not at the theater or...
No, one of the courthouses, more than sufficient enough right now, we don't need any upgrades on that, so... But yeah, this would be essentially all of the jail cameras, I think there's total of, there's 95 cameras over there on the system.
Yeah, there's a bunch. This company deals in the brand of equipment?
Yeah, they're, they're the, like, number one reseller of it in the area, so that was one of the reasons. And they were the ones who did the panic buttons and the alarm system over at the courthouse, so we already have a somewhat of a working relationship with them.
You see, they're a local company, too.
Yeah.
Right? Can I get a motion for him to go ahead and proceed?
I would make the motion for IT to go ahead with the update of the recording of the, we'll call them jail cameras, at the sheriff's office with HOKI communication. And that amount is $25,135.83.
One second. Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye. Thank you, Bill Ben. Lost funds. You guys?
Will you shoot back this clock?
Please. We've given Haley a copy of, uh, a contract we signed with Toine Fire Truck Company for $510,207.41 for a new pumper tanker for the city of New Hall. Within the next two years, our newest truck will be 20 years old. So we need to upgrade to keep insurance prices down within our fire district. If we don't replace that truck, our homeowners' insurances will go up significantly. So we're asking for assistance with purchasing this, as to whatever you guys can give us. Out of lost funds.
Do you want us to pay you guys directly, or do you want us to make it to this point?
Uh, to the city of New Hall?
City of New Hall would be great.
That's how we're finishing out, but you should do. So a 10% match would be $51,020.74. That's normally what we do for the gifting law on that, and that would be by the resolution. So I had to tweak that amount a little bit. So I'll retype that for you guys.
I would make the motion to do the gift with the New Hall Fire Department, the purchase of a new truck. And that would be a 10% to come out of the lost funds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the amount is $51,020.74.
I'll second then.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye. Okay. Thank you, guys.
And you check in the next claim run for...
Here, thank you.
Yep. You don't have to sign that, I'll, I'll retype it. I didn't have the invoice to see the full amount yet.
Oh. Uh, 9:25, Melinda?
Did you print them, I gave them copies of them.
Yeah, I have, I have two.
I got one question.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe I missed it in here. Where are these properties?
Um, the first one on resolution 2528 is in Shelsburg. I think they're out, are they out, the condos by the golf course?
Yeah, yep. They've had some splitting of numerous times out in there.
And replodding, and what happened was there, after Haley and I researched a little bit and discussed it, one of the reploddings, it left two little slivers of land next to each of the condos, which the land should've went with that condo, and so... And so it was a different homeowner, and she didn't understand why she needed to pay the taxes, because you couldn't do anything with the land. And so they're gonna roll them into the, they rolled them over to the condo parcels like they should have been.
I think they were originally in a whole tenth district, too. So that's why the assessor originally didn't combine them, I think, so we kept them separate.
That's the first one.
That's the first one.
That's the big one?
No.
It's the lower one.
This is twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight, resolution twenty-five, twenty-eight.
And they're per different code sections of Iowa, that's why we had them in two different resolutions.
Well, actually, we use the same one, but it's 'cause they're, one's a building on leased land, and this one's different.
Okay, can I get a motion for resolution twenty-five, twenty-eight?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty-five, twenty-eight. Do you want me to read any of this because of the code section?
No.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
I mean, you could be the amount, it's not much, we're striking.
Uh, there's two parcels, uh, two hundred and sixty dollars a parcel.
Then, resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine, um, this is the one that you helped, you answered me on last week.
Oh, yeah, last weekend.
Yeah, there is a building on leased land out, one of the cabin sites along the river. And it had burned down, and so it hasn't been taxed since two thousand and twenty-three. But it had the years of, the tax years of twenty-one and twenty-two still out there outstanding. And with building on leased lands, you can't sell them at tax sale, so they just kinda, just sit out there and just keep accumulating interest. Well, also, the person that had that agreement on that building on leased land, they have, they are since deceased, and the family's never stepped forward to do anything with it. And the landowner is willing to take over paying for that, the taxes on the separate lot now, but he didn't wanna pay the back taxes, 'cause he didn't have anything to really, other than the land being the landowner at that time. So I just, on resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine, I would just like to get the twenty-one and twenty-two tax assessed years off the books, so we can get that parcel cleaned up, and the amount's one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine, uh, for removing taxes, uh, for the total of one thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and that would be for the tax year of twenty-one, twenty-two. Second then.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Thank you.
I'm gonna pass these two, so Mel, if you keep an original. I'll just put them in your slot.
That's fine. Thank you.
Eric. Hey, we're back on time.
Try to keep that way. Uh, so I have the notice to destroy here. I don't know if Haley reformatted it or not, I can give you the copy I have, but just something we have to do every year, just let everyone know. The leads they gotta control there, we actually had May first as the date originally. I kinda just went with it, 'cause that's what it was last year, but in talk with some other weed commissioners, we pushed that date back to June first to give them a little time, 'cause leads are hard leaving up now, so. That's just state code, that's pretty clear on what it is. And I also have the, the roadside spraying notice, too, that we're gonna put out as well in there.
Can I get a motion for one of these dollars?
I've got a question for you.
Yep.
What is the, one of these weeds is way worse than the rest?
The Palmer amaranth?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a lot more invasive, they're trying to stay ahead of it.
Okay, and it's a, it's a, so.
No, it's, it's kinda like your water hemp, it's in the same family, looks like that. Um, there's just a lot more seeds on it, so. They're just trying to get ahead of it, 'cause it's not going crazy in Iowa quite yet, they're definitely not up this way, so.
We don't have too much teesles around here, do we?
No, but, uh-
Southern Iowa does.
I came from Breamer County, and it was all over up there.
Yeah, I know Southern Iowa does, too. And that's hard to kill.
It's, if you get ahead of it, you can, but it's very tall.
Yeah, six foot tall.
The leaves kinda cut to the stem, too, so they'll catch the water, so if it's really dry for a period of time, they'll have a lot of extra water in there, too, so.
I've been told multiple hours, Rose, if you hit those with a brush cutter mower after it's frozen, that it shatters it and it kills them.
I think with a lot of your woody plants, that happens.
That does?
Yeah.
So there's, that holds some water, huh?
It, yeah, it helps, I mean, you still are gonna have to hit it, but I, I feel like that's a pretty good way to do it.
Okay, yeah, well, that's good to know, 'cause I, I thought, no, that's, you're the expert on it.
They don't like getting frayed like that, I know.
Yeah.
I, I read your, the letter and the notice. I believe they're fine, I just didn't know what the one.
Yeah, it's, it's a different one, for sure. That's why they have it a class above.
Okay.
The only difference is the roadside spraying, you know, it's gonna begin May fifth.
Yeah, we'll start May, about May fifth, we're getting pretty much ready to go, but-
Okay.
Still gotta wait for the leads to come up a little bit, since we're just spot spraying.
I must have lost it, if Haley had us a-
You want the notices?
A resolution. I've got the le, the letter.
I didn't print the resolution, that's, I'm gonna put that, he revised that. I'm gonna put that whole format into our resolution, but-
So what is, what would our resolution number be?
Twenty-five, thirty.
I would move to approve resolution twenty-five, thirty, uh, and that is the letter for the public notice, uh, destruction of noxious weeds, and also the notice for the roadside spraying for the years twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
Go, Larry.
Thanks.
Right away.
I'll get you there, signing resolution.
Okay.
Discuss and approve service area amendments.
Yep, so I was, since I was doing all these reestimations and going through some budgets, um, there's a couple of service areas that I need to do some adjustments with. Service area three is one of them. I need to move some spending authority from the Veterans Department Twenty-One into the General Assistance Budget. And I've talked with Courtney, she's okay with that. I'm gonna move fifteen hundred from the VA and general basic into GA. And then out of Fund Two, I'm gonna move a thousand into the General Assistance. Had to, some of it had to do with insurance, 'cause hers is her salary split, and since she normally didn't take insurance, oh, she was. And then, um, I'm asking to take some out of Department Fifty, there was some extra spending authority, and put into Fund Two, Department Ninety-Nine. We had some unemployment that was needing some cushion. And then also, I'd like to put some in my department, so that I can pay Nancy her accrued vacation payout. And so that total would be out of service area nine, I wanna amend five thousand. And here's that resolution. I think you guys have it.
Is it twenty-five, thirty-one?
Yep. Shows you the different amounts I'll do journal entries for.
Yes, we do have that.
So we can do service amendments like this service area without a full budget amendment.
Oh.
But it has to be within that service area to move spending authority around.
In between the- Pretty good. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash thirty-one, uh, service area budget amendment. Do we need to list the numbers, since you just wrote them off?
No, you don't have to, it'll be in a minute.
All right, I will second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
And my last thing is that number seven. That's the yearly report I have to file for ARPA funds. Um, we've been doing it since we've got the funds. It's kinda where we keep track of how much money we committed out of the four point nine million, what we've spent, what we claim to still continue to spend. Um, and then I also had to tell them how far our projects are complete, so like the radio project and that. So that has been filed for the year, and I just need you guys to acknowledge it. And I believe I sent you guys that ARPA spreadsheet that I keep track of, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's where that dollar comes from.
Okay.
Can say this made much more sense once you go through it and you read the explanations on it. Uh, I would like to acknowledge the SLF RF compliance report for twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
How?
That don't have to be signed or nothing?
Nope, it's done online, but the auditors look at it that you acknowledged it.
Okay.
So if you initial one of those, that's fine.
Okay.
I do that, I have to do estate reporting for, like, the opioid funds. Um, I know Shelby will have to do it for the CDVG. And then we also have to file our, um, single federal audit, because we've, we've had over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal money, so then they have to have reports of that.
When do you have to close the ARPA funds out completely?
We have to have it committed by twenty-five, so we're good.
Okay.
So I think we still have a couple of years to utilize it, and that's why it's important that we committed that dollar amount, to show them that we are utilizing every dollar.
What, what if a project comes in a little bit cheaper on the ARPA funds?
Well, that's kinda where I have a, when I, if you look at my spreadsheet-
We have a cushion right now.
We do have a little cushion, but yet we're not done with the radio project, so.
That's been kind of an ongoing email here the last couple of days.
Yes. Did we come to a?
I think it's like thirty-two thousand, I have a little cushion, but, I mean, like-
It's gonna happen in May.
Clock tower, we don't really know until it's final, that kind of stuff.
Email I got yesterday.
I'll make one every day they get it, I'll try to make it work.
Yeah.
Do we still owe True North some?
No.
I feel like we're still-
We're gonna owe him something, yep, 'cause he's still involved in it. He's been dealing with John directly.
Okay. 'Cause I still have a portion of that, too.
Yes. You know, that's, like I said, this comes with radios, the, all this stuff, and it's, I know nothing. I'm Schultz.
Sometimes it's better that way, right?
Yes.
How many people do you think wouldn't know what that reference meant?
I do.
You did?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, good. There, good. There you go, so you know who the youngest in the room is.
Like every Saturday morning.
Never missed it.
Myron. We don't get much done, but we have fun, don't we?
We're right, thank you, buddy.
I'm good.
Yes, you are. Thank you, buddy. Just like you approved the county's budget here earlier this morning, DOT requires a budget form to be approved for secondary roads expenditures. What I've given you, um, and little update, um, kind of a carryover from last week, that, uh, in the past, the DOT budget, uh, um, got reviewed by the DOT after it was approved by the county. And with legislative changes on dates, they used to have hours and minutes to try to review that, to get everything turned in on time, to get everything processed in the state. The DOT has changed things, so that they wanna see a draft version of your budget before it comes before the Board of Supervisors, just so they can make some of their. Um, so DOT has already looked at this proposed budget, um, they had made an error, um, in that the beginning, hundreders balance for the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-five was an incorrect amount, it didn't match the end of twenty twenty-three, so they got that change paid. Other than that, there weren't any changes. Um, what I did change from what was submitted, and Haley mentioned earlier this morning, is that I reduced the secondary road levy coming on a general basic and rural services from ninety-two and a half percent to ninety percent of the maximum allowed. Um, so that reduced the total property tax limit by just under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're over ninety-one thousand dollars from rural services, and just under eight thousand in general basic. Otherwise, the, uh, the first page asking for the cover sheet here on the budget sheet for the DOT is the receipts or revenues, the very top column, the far right column, the top row, shows the fund balances beginning July one of twenty-six. The, uh, county secondary road levy, um, amount combined, going down that, uh, column. Haley earlier this year, or this winter, had shared with me the local option sales tax and how the percentage were figured in the past. If we were to do that moving forward, um, at the same percentage, um, about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars of local option sales tax would come into secondary roads annually. Estimated road use tax for the year, um, transfer jurisdictions within cities, the less than five hundred. Bruce, um, you're probably semi-familiar with that, because Norway was recently impacted by that, by dropping below five hundred prior when the TJ bill was first enacted, what, twenty years ago? That affected Garrison, LaZerne, and Mott Arbor, but now Norway is also in there. That road use tax money, a portion of road use tax money that used to go to those four cities comes to secondary roads. A farm-to-market extension road that runs through those cities. The state looked at that as a percentage of the total street miles, and that percentage of road use tax money that they used to receive comes to secondary roads. Um, we have a twenty-eight E agreement with the city of Norway, the city of Garrison, and the city of LaZerne to return some of that money back to them. Um, Mott Arbor does not have any twenty-eight E agreement, so we keep all of that money here. Time twenty-one is an estimate that I get from the state. Uh, rise funds is, uh, special grant money that we don't have, it submitted anything. Um, FA stands for Federal Aid Bridge Replacement, that is reimbursements for federal aid projects, bridge projects, uh, as we build them and complete construction, we get reimbursed for all or most of the construction costs. Two years ago, in preceding that, there used to be what was called a swap bridge fund. Um, they separated those two out. We were to pass all of those swap bridge projects, so there won't be any money in that whole line item moving forward. Uh, no tracks, transfer, tax refunds, that's primarily sales tax that we get back on land and fuel. And then miscellaneous receipts, uh, thirty-five thousand, and primarily overweight permits, uh, trip permits, that includes the annual permit that, uh, all systems permit that a lot of people, a lot of individuals have applied for, um, through the DOT, and we get a portion of that that comes back to us. Old equipment that we sell at auction, um, if the project moves forward, Thirty-second Avenue, between Highway Thirty and Seventy-Fifth Street, I don't know exactly who's, um, good to pay extra up in year one, but I think fifty thousand dollars is, um, approximately one-seventh of that total project cost. Um, so that number could be a little bit higher, but if everybody chooses a seven-year option, that would be about that amount annually for seven years. Um, and then occasionally, we've got a little bit of used material that generates, that gets resold. Um, all of those miss- that gets resold. All of those miscellaneous receipts total up to about $116,000. So total receipts, including the fund balance, is 17.5 million dollars. The last sheet then has to do with expenditures. When I was in here, went over the county's budget. I think I was telling you, and as we were going through each line item, some of those kind of get grouped together as different subheadings. That's kind of how the DOT breaks us down there. Instead of all, I don't know, nine pages worth of line items, they're broken down into, what is there, five, nine, 10, 11, 12 subsections? The top row has to do with administrative expenditures, and the second one is engineering expenditures. The DOT looks at those two numbers collectively, and if one, if one subgroup is greater than the other, but the other is less than, if you stay below that 760, I don't need a DOT budget amendment. Second major area is construction, 3.5 million dollars. And then roadway maintenance, bridges and culverts, 260,600. Roads, 5,200,000. Snow and ice control, 565,750,000. Traffic controls, 284,500. Road clearing, 205,000. The general, the total roadway maintenance, 6,515,850. From a, just reiterating from the DOT budget amendment, that 760, that 3.5 million dollars, 6.5 million dollars, those are three numbers. And the fourth number that I'll say in just a moment are the numbers that they look at for if you are anticipating exceeding a budget amendment would be needed. General roadway expense, new equipment, 1 million dollars. Equipment operations, 1,969,200. Tools, materials, and supplies, 210,000. And real estate and buildings, 208,700,000. That general roadway total was 3,387,900. Total expenditures of those four added together is 14,163,750. Diggs into the fund balance on secondary roads a little bit, so that the proposed any balance at the end of fiscal year '26 would be 3,419,000 in odd cents. The secondary roads budget or balance carryover has been pretty much 6 million dollars if you look at the top of sheet two. I mentioned, I think, once before, the DOT looks at net expenses, where the county budget has to show the actual expenditures from those net things. These numbers are a little bit less than what was just approved for the secondary roads, in my opinion. Generally, how I have submitted the DOT budget is that the numbers are such that the county budget's always going to control what's going on, and it's just a matter of filling this out and submitting it to the DOT. Sometimes if a budget amendment is needed by the county, I probably need to do it from DOT's perspective. But there are a lot of times where maybe working with Haley and shifting some money within secondary roads that may actually, may or may not in time, and force a budget amendment from the DOT. But the numbers that you approve from the county budget and results should be very similar to what this DOT budget is. And if you have any questions, I would gladly answer them on that sheet. If not, I would gladly take a motion to approve the matter of DOT's fiscal year '26 budget.
Only question I got. This fiscal year, you should have saved quite a bit on salt and sand, correct?
Possibly. It's passed, winner. Right. I piggybacked off the DOT on purchasing salt. Those agreements have generally had a minimum purchase that went with them. I wasn't required to meet that minimum a year ago and two years ago. I haven't heard yet. That contract runs through the end of May. Whether I have to meet that 60% minimum or not, I have not quite purchased that much at this point.
Okay. And you don't have to purchase it, do you?
I didn't have to the last, previous two winters. Before that, I used to have to.
Okay.
Or pay a storage fee.
Ooh, okay.
But I have not been required to do that these last two winters.
And now you have to new hoop building up now, right?
Correct. Need to do some work inside it to increase the storage. We kind of built around the old salt storage that we put in there. But potentially, we could store 75 to 100% of our needed salt for the year in that building all at one time versus needing to bring it in three, four, five times throughout the winter.
Okay. Okay. Any questions I have?
Do, like in the automotive industry, every year they come out with something else, and you have to buy a whole new set of tools to service that. Does that happen often for you guys? Or is it not that technical? Do you have to buy specialized tools to work on this stuff?
I don't know if I can answer that question completely. I know that, at least for the most part, the physical work that we do hasn't required a lot of specialized tools. So we did shop around, it's been two years ago now roughly, on a diagnostic tool. That was where things were getting very specific. And if you had this manufacturer, only their tool would work to read the diagnostics and so forth. And we've got one that will do a lot of universal activities. There's still some specialized stuff, and we're taking it to those set dealers. And certainly, anything that's under warranty, we're just taking it to the dealer to address that. That may change yet, I guess, as things move forward. Although a lot of things have been put in place, some of that stuff is still somewhat in its infancy from an end-to-end warranty. But at this point, we haven't seen that big of an impact.
Well, I know that when Vols Auto shut down in Norway, and he had that sale, all of that equipment that he paid tens of thousands of dollars for, because it's obsolete. And that is confusing. That's why I was wondering if you guys get caught up in that as well. So, thank you.
I did, first time I've ever seen this. I do not have any questions. I read it last night. It didn't make much sense, but it makes a lot more sense now. What's he trying to tell me here? Now I understand.
So can I get a motion to approve the secondary roads budget for Iowa Department of Transportation?
I'll make the motion to approve the secondary road budget for the Iowa Department of Transportation.
I will second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Vols, aye.
May I sign a copy, Dr. B?
Yep.
Ah, this is what I'm writing.
I'm glad you're on my road today.
Yep. Please, please, for lying out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I heard. Scotty's right. I'll let you on Derek.
Nah, that's all right. I'll listen closely.
In addition to the budget, every year, Iowa DOT requires a five-year program to be submitted. At about the same timeframe, for the last 15 years, I have found it's a lot easier to present the proposed construction activities on a map, highlighting each fiscal year. And granted, the construction program is when the projects are let, not always when they are constructed. Projects are all in paper format. There's about 20 pages here. I chose not to hand that to you with the project number. But actually, I'll back up. I handed you an individual sheet just to give you information on projects that are under contract, are proposed to be worked, both on the DOT's perspective that I know of and on the county's perspective. I know that the DOT has a contract with an asphalt contractor doing construction work in I-380 between Urbana and Brandon exit and between the Brandon exit and the Jessup exit. There's also an asphalt resurfacing project on Highway 8 from Dizer East over to 218. I've not heard any updates on that project and when that's happening. But we're doing extended intersection filllets at the gravel roads on that, that the county will be participating in the cost. The DOT also just recently signed a contract for down on Highway 30 and 32nd Avenue and 33rd Avenue to do extend or offset right turn lanes, basically building the right turn lane and then paving that and replacing, I believe, a roadway culvert that goes under Highway 30 at 32nd Avenue. Those intersections, I think, will be partially closed while some of that work is being done, but both intersections will not be closed at the same time. And as I learn more from the DOT, I'm sure that the county and the city of Norway would hopefully be invited to the pre-construction meeting with that project, just so they hear what the proposed timeframe is on building it and how they're proposing to close those intersections when they need to.
Not Norway, Atkins.
Atkins, I'm sorry. You looked at me funny, and Scott would have probably corrected you. I'm talking too fast at the moment. Apologize.
The second turn lane, that's onto a gravel road, isn't it?
No.
No.
West side pavement.
West side's one of them?
West side road, and then the regular road there at that monument of Atkins.
Okay.
Like Craig's Corner.
Because I was thinking that it was, no, the one east.
Nope.
No.
Okay.
Is that the one leading south to west side there on 30?
Yes.
Why are you getting it out?
So, no, the Atkins corner, they're putting a right turn lane there?
Yes.
Because that, to the south, is a gravel road.
Going, this will be going to the north.
To the north.
North into Atkins. Whether you're coming to Atkins from the east or whether you're coming to Atkins from the west, both of those two intersections on Highway 30 are going to have extended or offset right turn lane.
Okay.
Right now, 33rd has a turn, right turn lane on it, but it's not offset.
Yeah, it's next to it.
It's next to it. So just like 21st Avenue is right now at Van Horn in Blairstown, the right turn lanes that you have for eastbound and westbound, where you've got that painted white triangle, and that turning lane is actually further off from the main travel way is how that's going to be done at 32nd and 33rd.
Thank you for the explanation, because I was looking at, I think, a lot of the devil's bullets there.
Yes. It'll also help everybody that is southbound and setting a stop sign, being able to see traffic coming from the east, traveling west better.
Right.
Vehicles that sometimes can get hidden in the passing lane from a vehicle that's in the main lane will be easier to see with that offset right turn lane.
A lot of federal builders that have intersection series ones because of that. Yeah, yeah. Well, that cleans that up. I appreciate that.
And then this bridge just out northeast of Vinton has been under construction. The bridge deck was poured, what, two weeks ago? Probably will be getting wrapped up in the next 30 days. And we just signed a contract for the one down near Norway to replace that bridge with a twin box culvert. 74th Street, just off Oak Tool 1 or off of 30th Avenue, those three property owners have paid for doing a seal coat off of that paved road. And I'm not sure exactly what I'm going to do, but I intend on working on 22nd Avenue down by the dairy operation, on improving that rock road condition for the dairies operation. Those are all things that are a little bit bigger than large maintenance or nearly construction that are certain that are happening here in the next few months. There may be more, but because fiscal year starts July 1, it's, I was just showing known facts on what's going on there. For the five-year construction program, fiscal year '26, bridges that I have identified as replacement projects, some of them are, or all of them are in various array of design aspects right now. Working north to south, there are two bridges about a mile apart from, on the creek itself, West of Mount Auburn. The northernmost one has low traffic count, would need to be a local project. That project is all designed for a replacement. The additional right-of-way that we need on that project has been, purchase agreements have been signed by those property owners, and I will be bringing those to you, I believe, next week, because I don't think I've done that today. And I think I've had them for a couple of weeks. And set them off on the corner of my desk. The southernmost one, one of the property owners has signed the purchase agreement. The other property changed hands, and we are working with that other property owner right now. I'm trying to set up that purchase agreement for the added land for that bridge replacement. Kind of the northeast part of the county, that bridge is to be replaced with a twin box culvert. I just got the purchase agreements back from the acquisition people late Friday, early Monday. Haven't had a chance to look at them, but I'll probably be bringing those to you for approval next Tuesday's meeting. Continuing south, I'll back up. The south, one of the two bridges on the, if on the northwest corner, as well as the one I'm just talking about, do have traffic counts above 25 vehicles a day, so those are going to be federal aid projects. So we will get reimbursed for 100% of our construction costs on those two bridges. Two bridges that are close to each other, east and west, just west of Shelsburg. The west one qualifies for federal aid. The east one does not. The east one is right there by Fixes. We purchased all of that right-of-way needed for that project. That one would need to be a local lighting. We'll be setting that up internally ourselves here shortly, here as the calendar year goes on. Immediately south there, just kind of northwest of Atkins, a bridge on, what is it, 69th Street. The purchase agreements on that have just recently been signed, and I will be bringing those purchase agreements to you shortly. But that bridge qualifies for federal aid, so that But that bridge qualifies for federal aid, so that one would be getting reimbursed at 100%. South of Atkins, south of 30, that bridge also federal aid qualifies, so will be reimbursed for 100% of our construction costs on that project. And then a bridge just outside of Luzern, right next to UBU Railroad, the county structure, that bridge also qualifies for federal aid funding. The one at Luzern, the one south of Atkins, and the one, oh, what, four miles west of Shelsburg, furthest west one, those three projects are just really in their initial stages of design. The other bridge projects on fiscal year 26 have already been sized, drawn up, and pretty well ready for final plans. Proposing, purchase some additional right-of-way between Blairstown and Highway 30 and doing some grading and widening the shoulders. Talked about this project for a couple of years. We just haven't been able to keep getting, moving forward to the next step, but doing work similar to what you see between Van Horn and 30, with this project being four miles and, almost four miles in length versus two and a half miles north of town and estimated costs on doing it. It'll probably need to be done by a contractor versus secondary roads just from a daily labor limit that the DOT has on performing construction now. That doesn't prevent us from doing it, but we need to let the contractors provide us with the cost of doing it first. If we thought we could do it for less, I could then do it. But as hungry as some contractors seem to be sometimes, moving dirt and doing some other things, it might be beneficial to leave that as a contract project. What I'm calling pavement rehab, not separated between concrete and asphalt, but from 218 going towards Garrison and existing concrete road, I had submitted that as a project to the, for regional SDP money that has been approved for fiscal year 26. And then, north of New Hall, from the curve, north to what I call the Shelsburg Road or E-36, some asphalt resurfacing. Old Highway 131 from Bell Plain, north to Highway 30, and then south of Shelsburg, those last three being existing asphalt or HMA pavements and doing some HMA overlay with them. Those three segments, I think, condition-wise are probably the worst asphalt paving condition-wise we have in the county currently. And then Haley and I are working on the final language on the petition, but what I've highlighted in orange is doing the rock base and seal coat from Highway 30 south to 75th, and then a little bit on 74th and a little bit on 75th. That captures what is proposed for fiscal year 26. Questions?
Okay. North of New Hall, last year's budget, you wanted to replace the box culvert right north of the curve.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have it in this year's budget.
Correct. Other bridge conditions, weight limits and other things, felt that those, these, I guess, had a needed higher priority.
Okay. I understand that. Then also last year, in '24, you said what you got proposed this year, and then last year's budget, you got proposed even doing it around the curve in 218. But this year, you don't.
Having not done some HMA work for a few years, I underestimated some of what our costs might have been. Evaluating pavement conditions, two thoughts. My thought on previous ones was if we tied work in close proximity to each other, you got a better deal for all the work done. However, trying to capture what needs to be done based on condition, these three right now are the ones that really need the biggest attention moving forward after we did what we did last year.
And then, the old Bell Plain Road, you're planning on re-grinding that and then relaying it?
Ultimately, I would. After that was used as a detour, I'm still negotiating or talking with the DOT. I'm not sure if we need to do some type of Band-Aid if we would propose doing some major work with that roadway in the near future. But it's quite, kind of at a, it hasn't significantly deteriorated from after the detour used. Was just on it Friday morning, evaluating it a little bit more. I would like to regrade that road and redo that somewhat, get rid of some of the, well, it, like, north of Blairstown is on an old 66-foot right-of-way. There isn't much ditches there. There's some sharp vertical curves. It would be, ideally, it would be great to redo that altogether. If you did that, it's a, or it's spending a lot of money on surface improvements. Could we do some minor surface improvements to buy us some time as we put that all together? And that might be more of what I'd do, and I might get more assistance from the DOT than trying to develop a $4 million project that redoes that entire road section.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Continue. Or, excuse me. Anybody else got questions for him on that first page?
No.
Does he require any closures of the road for any particular amount of time or any of that?
Generally, HMA resurfacing, I've done one lane at a time, and it's been flaggers and other than delays, but not closures. Obviously, bridges replacements would have to be that way. The concrete going from 218 towards Garrison might require some closure. My thoughts right now would be to grind that concrete up and turn it into a granular base, put it down, and then pave the new concrete on top of it, which is how I did 218 to Shelsburg 20, almost 20 years ago, give or take. Did allow traffic on it. It reduced the number of people that wanted to use it with that type of condition. That Shelsburg road ended up staying that way for a longer period than I had anticipated, but didn't do a great job of getting the bridge deck replacement contractor and the paving contractor on the same page. And the paving contractor was ready to go sooner than the bridge was, contractor was ready to get that all done. So, we ended up, ended up being ground up and set for a number of months before it actually got paved. I would not anticipate that to be the case out here at Garrison, but there might be some, if not closures, maybe some bigger delays there. Fiscal year 27, bridges, West of Mount Auburn, federal aid bridge that's all designed, ready to go. Property owner on the north side has signed that purchase agreement. We've already paid them for that. The south property owner has been a difficult challenge and has not been receptive to this project to date. That may be a discussion, that will be a discussion that comes up here at a later date, but I have postponed that project until fiscal '27 to give us some time to try to form some resolution on that project. Coincidentally, that property owner is also the half-property owner on previous fiscal year 26. Bridge on 16th Avenue, just east of 218, one mile, mile and a half south of D-65. And I think I had the same challenge there, so that project may not happen to fiscal year 26. I'm not sure yet. The Cedar River Bridge, I've started some initial concept thoughts on a deck overlay on that bridge. That's a $2 million-plus project. Hoping that I could secure some other type of grant money. Iowa County Engineers Association has been working on some of these major infrastructure grants that the previous administration had put together, but they have been concentrating more on replacements, our county engineer organization, than major rehabilitation. But there is no need for the county to tear that Cedar River Bridge out and replace it at this point. We could do a milling of existing concrete on that repair, put an overlay concrete on it, just like the DOT has done on the Cedar River Bridge just north of Vinton and patch areas that need to be done the worst. But an estimated cost right now is just over $2 million on doing that. If I can find some other funding source, I'd rather do that than use our federal aid bridge money. Much smaller bridge, but similarly, just outside of Bell Plain. That bridge, I've patched a few times, could also have needs a deck overlay done to that. Those two bridges or deck overlays could be tied together. There's a couple others that are coming up in the future years, as I'll talk about, but if, if a federal grant would become available that we could secure, that would be my preferred route on trying to do some of these deck overlays if I could do it versus our federal aid money that goes farther on smaller bridges. Box culverts, north of New Hall, Tracy, I have in fiscal year 27. The north one, I am proposing to use SDP region money on. Depending on how we do that project, there may be some safety ideas that could be incorporated into that project. This gives me some time to maybe secure some safety money in addition to help pay for a part of that project. That's another reason why the box culvert near the curve and maybe any curve work, I've delayed till '27. Some suggestions that came out of the safety workshop that we had last year, maybe could be incorporated with that and that might apply and be able to use some safety funds to help pay for a part of that project. Those two box culverts, or both of those would be box culvert candidate or structures to replace. A single contractor would love them from a mobility, mobilization standpoint, they're both there, but at the same time, they could be built at exactly the same time because it's going to interfere with at least one residence, but just, I would not want to shut that completely off, that one would need to be completed, backfilled and usable before the other one could be started. And then, northeast of Norway, south of Atkins, however you want to call it, but I've got one final bridge in that area. It doesn't have an embargo on it, but it's, I think, only about 20 feet wide. I know it messes with farm equipment and going through that, but this would be the north, would be north of the one that we just signed a contract on. It's just about, it's immediately south of the T-intersection. And all of the bridge projects would all qualify for federal aid or regional aid with what's being proposed for bridges being replaced in fiscal year 27. Feel the county's highest priority in improving wider shoulders and grading would be that road north of Blairstown that I mentioned in fiscal year 27. I would like to do what we refer to as the old West Side Road over by Atkins, and it's always been a snow trap. I think I'm still going to have a snow trap on the north side of the trailer park just with the way the buildings are there. I can't think I'm ever going to eliminate that snow drip that creates itself right there. But there's a few other areas there that widening that right-of-way from 66 feet to 100 feet, widening the shoulders and doing some grading work there would benefit things. On the very north end, across from Becker's, the city of Atkins does have that hatted all the way out to the center line of the road. And has done a little bit of work there. I think there's a retention pond immediately adjacent to that road, and all of that has been asked from our end, but I would anticipate the ability to work with Atkins in that short area to make some improvements there. And then, HMA resurfacing pavement rehab would then be north of Blairstown and going past the landfill and doing some patching, going areas where we might need it between the main highway and the landfill, because we've done some work there before, but then from the landfill down to Hanan, it hasn't been resurfaced for quite some time. Questions on fiscal year 27? Fiscal year 28, bridge rehab, say rehab, but West of Mount Auburn, it's a steel beam bridge with wood plank across it. It just needs some major rehab work done that would qualify, I think that I got this right, but I know it doesn't need to be replaced. There's some deck rehab work to do in that project that would work well for federal aid money. The bridge that is just east of the Vinton Quarry, north of town, is starting to break the top layer of the concrete between the rebar and the surface are popping up, and it needs to have a deck overlay done to it. There again, that would be ideal if it could be tied to some federal grant to offset using our BR money. We've got, what, three bridges fairly close to each other, one being really close to Schminkie Equipment, west of there and south of there, the yellow pink hexagon that I've highlighted is a Pony Trust. A thought that has crossed my mind that might be cheaper and that might depend on property owners is whether or not that bridge would just be eliminated and create a dead end and build a new road a quarter mile west of there, which would be west of the creek, wouldn't require a bridge, and build about a third of a mile in length just west of that, tying it to the road that goes north. Working east and west across here, there's bridge just off of two eighteen. Culvert Bridges, some of these are box culverts pavement between Garrison and Van Horn. And then west of Garrison, two bridges. There are one, two, three, four bridges, excuse me, five bridges on fiscal year twenty-eight that have traffic counts less than twenty-five vehicles a day, so they're going to have to be local projects, they won't qualify for federal aid. But fortunately, most of them, I think four out of the five are going to be box culverts, so they won't be as expensive. This might have to adjust a little itself depending on where we stand since they're local projects. And then a bridge box culvert that would be down east of the dairy, bottom of it. Right away in order of what I think importance, Blairstown north, one, Atkins south on the west side, two, and Old One Thirty-One north of Bell Plain being three is look at buying what right away would be necessary to make those improvements on that highway over there. And then asphalt resurfacing along the Buchanan County Line, northeast of Mount Auburn and then east and west of Blairstown. That going east out of Blairstown was a project I'd submitted to the region for STP money. Questions on fiscal year twenty-eight?
This is all fluid?
Yes, it is. I think fiscal year twenty-six is the most important. But any project that is in the five-year plan, if it needs to be done sooner, if it's in the program, it's real easy on my end with the DOT to just move it. It's not a big deal. What's more work is that if it's not on one of these five years and you need to bring it in completely, it takes a little bit more time and a lot more questions being asked. As road conditions change, pavement resurfacing recommendations might change too. I know this morning traveling between Watkins and Blairstown, I was noting concerns, but not as big a concerns on that road this morning as I see on Old One Thirty-One south of Blairstown, north of New Hall. Fiscal year twenty-nine. Replacing the box culvert that is on the Mount Auburn blocktop right out by south of what used to be Kirsten's Lights. Bridge over in Homer Township, just two miles east of twenty-one. Another bridge deck overlay that will would potentially need to be done outside of Keystone. And then box culvert to replacement, but it's a bridge right now right off north of Luzerne, just off the pavement. Bridge mile east of Twenty-First and mile south of Thirty. Pony Trust, it's over by Roy John Becker's. And then a box culvert down by mile east of Dairy. Fiscal year twenty-eight was the bridge just north of that intersection. This one's just west of the intersection. I'm not sure what I want to do at Roy John's Pony Trust, but I fear that as age continues there, that the county's dealing with the liability that they need, may need to just want to get rid of that bridge at some point and, and replace it in some fashion. And I'm proposing to do that in fiscal year twenty-nine. I'm just not sure how I'm going to do it yet. Doesn't really fit well as a lower auto crossing there, I don't think, like we have done with a number of low travel roads. But if there's another bridge type design that might work there, that might be lower cost, but not lower use. I know that the Becker family particularly crosses that bridge because they've got property and residents on both sides of that. Even though it is a dirt road, they work with, by their nature from that standpoint, but they travel back and forth. Not to say they're the only ones on that, but they are heavy users of that. Resurfacing proposed in fiscal year twenty-nine would be what I call the high road just out north of Vinton. East and west of Garrison there on E twenty-two and then north of New Hall around the curve to two eighteen. Questions on fiscal year twenty-nine?
What the only thing I got, west of Fremont there, north of New Hall there. If that company that lays that this year, north of New Hall going north, if they could lay a little bit in there where them box culverts had settled. Two box culverts there and it's you feel them. They could smear a little bit in there.
Certainly something to talk to them about.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
And then fiscal year thirty, twenty-thirty, bridges. Although maybe not quite needed yet in fiscal year thirty. The river bridge, Cedar River Bridge between Shelsburg and Urbana is two years newer, I believe it is, than the one north of Mount Auburn. Year newer, not two years newer, they're both built about the same time. This one doesn't seem to have as much deck issues as the other one does, but four or five years from now, I'm not quite sure what its condition would be, but it would be another ideal deck overlay project at that point, four years from now, five years from now, that two plus million dollars might be three million dollars. I don't know how fast construction costs are going to go up in the next four years. Federal aid, bridge candidates proposed for fiscal year twenty, or fiscal year thirty would be those two bridges, one on the Shelsburg concrete and one just north of it, west of Shelsburg. South of Shelsburg and working with Lynn County on replacing the crick bridge on the Lynn Benton Line. If right away acquisition would go fine in fiscal year twenty-nine. Maybe doing some major regrading of Old One Thirty-One north of Bell Plain then. And some concrete rehab. Tearing up, replace overlay depending on what we feel might be the best thing to do in fiscal year thirty would be north of Watkins and southeast of Norway. I intend on proposing using regional STP money to do south and east of Norway. Questions on fiscal year thirty?
On One Fifty-One there at Walford. I remember that summer, last fall, I was contacted by the DOT to do a survey on that stretch of highway, three miles.
Correct. Heard nothing more, but they, yeah, I participated in the same survey. They were asking, I think, everything, I think basically from Highway Thirty intersection, I think, south on One Fifty-One all the way to the Ammanos. I don't know if it went farther than that or not, but I think it was that segment. I have, I have not heard anything more when they are proposing to do there or what they're developing, but I'm sure we'll both learn more as time goes, but I've heard nothing. Think they, I think the thought was maybe a super two where they would build some passing lanes on that maybe and wondering how traffic was feeling about that. I know shortly after that survey, I tend to travel that road more northbound than I do southbound, but I have found southbound traffic that travels less than the speed limit frequently in my travels. That's a proposed five-year plan. I'd say I tweaked it from if you were looking at a previous one. Jerry's probably looked at a previous one behind me too. I'd say I did the last three days too, and I'm like, well, here's why I moved a few things. We currently, Benton County currently gets one point one point six million dollars in road use tax into farm market fund. Last year we did north of Shelsburg, six miles, Vinton out to the Oak Grove Church, and then we did that three and a half miles of new pavement. Those three projects combined were just shy of six million dollars. At one point six million dollars a year, that's the equivalent of what? Almost four years' worth of farm to market funds. You can borrow against the farm market funds. Benton County as a whole over the years has always stayed in the black, but there's no reason that I can't be in the red legally. I know the first time I went into the red, Joe Marlowe was the auditor and the DOT always looks at the programmed amount immediately and takes it off that fund. And on paper, it looks like you just wire two million dollars in the hole. Well, it's just a number on paper. It's how they do programming, which is why they allow you to borrow so much ahead. It's based on your dollar amount and, and time. So I've also adjusted some of these paving projects, wanting to primarily use farm to market money, but know that I can't go too far in the hole if we were to start operating in the red. But if that's all right with you as a fluid proposed plan, I'd take a motion to accept that and
Don't make a motion to accept the five-year plan. Benton County, second to the votes?
I'll second that motion.
Paul Frey vote?
Tippett, aye.
Demon, aye.
Jewel, aye.
Thanks, Myron. Thank you. If you sign anything, I just assigned a copy of the front page of both of those. I will take the chairman's signature. You've already made a motion. Oh, you got one?
I got the first one. For the five for fiscal year twenty-six.
I'll have to laminate this and keep listening.
We have a copy in fact there.
I forgot to mention that one, didn't I?
Well, no, but I saw it and I thought, oh, boy.
I I'll back up to fiscal year twenty-seven, I think is where I put it in, but just uptown Sixty-first Street. I know that a concerned and interested property owner was in my office earlier this week. You know, I meant to look, I know that Chive Hattery did do some cost estimating. I think they're all over a million dollars on doing the grading pipes, roadway structures. The width of road as requested by that individual. But the direction that I felt from the county's perspective is that that ought to be some joint involvement, not solely a county project. And I haven't heard the city of Vinton say I would be interested in participating in this much. I haven't heard property owners say I would be interested in participating in this much. I don't know whether the school is really a financial player, but they certainly would be impacted by that project also. And although we've had many discussions and many people involved from a financial standpoint, if the county's stand is that they want additional players involved with that financially, I haven't heard anything that anyone has come forward on that.
How far does the annexation go to that road from Vinton?
The north, the north right-of-way line, the way that road was developed there. It actually got moved from when it was originally established and with the way that property is described, the city limits goes to the north property, north right-of-way line of that existing road right now.
So the sirens, so the sirens are. Appears like it is. They planted a siren right in the ditch.
Just south of the city limits? I think the city of Vinton would be really interested in that road getting done.
I, I would assume that would be their next spot for Tracy's been there and I haven't.
But I neglected it. I did highlight it on there. I did, I was putting in an immediate year. I didn't do that this current program. I put it out twenty-seven. I know the mayor asked once, what's the urgency of it? I don't know if there's an urgency there or not, but I foresee some, some advantages probably to the city of Vinton that from my perspective, your perspectives, I think that involves financial participation, but I haven't heard that come back from the city.
I'm still trying to work with EasyCock over it.
I mentioned that to the property owner. He's like, I've been hearing that for four years.
There's other players involved who are not playing with me.
When does any of this stuff move fast? I've never seen anything that does so.
And I know from talking to some of the folks at the school, they would like to get the farm traffic moved off from in front of the school. To Tilford School over here.
How much traffic is it? Do you know what the count is on going by the school?
Myron probably knows that, but I could not tell you.
I do not.
I don't, but you could, I know that, well, the DOT is going away from printed traffic count maps for the future, and there's an interactive map that you can go to off of that website page. And I think it has the current average count. I know for all of the county roads, I think if you were to zoom in on city streets, you may potentially see that also. I haven't tried that yet, but I just know that I learned that last month at a county engineers exec board meeting that DOT reported that that they were going to do away with future traffic control maps and that you would just, they'll still continue to do interval traffic counts and update things, but you're going to go to an interactive map and pull that stuff off of that instead.
And then in your many, many And then, in your many, many emails from the DOT, have you heard anything about the buy-in down there?
I have not.
Okay.
Can't even remember if it's, if it's still in their five-year program or not?
I do not know, I know I threw a monkey wrench in the idea three years ago, four years ago, but...
I don't, I'm not sure if the DOT's five-year program would, is recently approved or about to be approved by the DOT commissioners, but I know that, uh, I sometimes go to that every once in a while and just see what projects the DOT has going on, um, I know that was, was looking at that with Highway 30 for a bit, um, and that's when I encountered some work at 150 that I didn't knew that was happening a couple of years ago, I think that's where I learned originally about resurfacing Highway 8, see if that or it was a desert resident that called me and told me about it, it might have been both, but...
Okay, uh, how are you coming with the power to the light at the Blarstown corner?
Electrician called me yesterday, said he was waiting for the boarding, individual for boarding, and he'd get back to me and I haven't heard from him yet, but he did have a couple of questions and I answered for him, but the biggest thing was waiting to hear back from the trench or the boarding contractor.
Got it, got it, and then do you have that stop sign that's got the flashing lights ordered?
No, but I need to, I was gonna re-talk to him today after I got, was working on this, but I primarily had a deadline there, but, um, in case you didn't know, I guess, it's been, um, Tracy stopped on top of me yesterday because he noticed the same thing, but, um, I had contacted, um, a electrical company that had a used light pole, and I asked him to move forward with putting a concrete foundation in for the pole at 21st Avenue and 30, south of New Hall, well, I got back from that conference here the other day and I went to work, I came to work, I think, Monday morning, I'm like, I'm gonna go over and look at that and see how that concrete base looks, well, concrete base is poured and the light pole's up on it right now, I just hadn't got the electrical power to it yet, so I'm working with a local electrician to get the power to it, but we are working on very soon having that intersection lit up on the north side, on the Van Horn side, and at the junction, I'll give you those flashing red beacons ordered and installed on top of the stop signs, um, and then we can talk more if we want to do anything additional at that intersection, but things are moving forward fast here right now, or...
Well, that's good.
Thank you. Faster than four years that we were just talking about in a different way.
Yeah, that's good. All the questions I got, I got some checks for you for oil, but I'll just worry about here, come up, I got an hour to kill before the next meeting.
They keep recruiting all kinds of people.
All right, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
You can eat at the next meeting.
No, girl, no thanks. All right, we're down to reports.
I sat in on the ECOC meeting, Tracy was there present, I zoomed in and I was waiting for an hour and, uh, I mean, it was, it was fine, I just, I just wanted to stay up, stay up on it, but I do have a Heartland meeting on Thursday in Tama.
Chief's coming next week for our renewals too.
Right.
Uh, my big one last week was the HACAP, uh, they're still moving forward with, with everything they've got going, they've got the two top people are retiring, so they've put forth a plan, uh, they wanna add an IT person and a facilities type person, uh, the rest of the programs are doing well, although now I hear rumors from the federal government that they may be pulling a bunch of stuff you hear on the news, who knows? Could be no truth in any of it. I had another meeting, it's not coming to mind right now, so it's a bit, a bit shaky. The HACAP meeting is always very informative.
At Eastern, EZCOC, which you were there for a while.
Yep.
Not much going on there yet, uh, also had Eastern, Eastern Housing Trust fund, and our next meeting is May 29th, and that's when officially Tracy Albrecht will be retiring. So there was a lot of applications are gonna start coming in now for houses and for rehabs, and they did get some of the funding from the federal government already, so, but next month will be kind of a busy meeting that we'll have to go through all the applications to see who qualifies, and I guess that's about it, yeah, I guess. Any comments from the public?
One, I'm sitting watching online, I can never see anybody sitting along this wall, there's a lot of people talking over there and they don't state their name, you know, they're just talking, cannot be improved upon?
We can try.
Okay, 'cause I think there was something come up last year about that, they said that supervisors said that...
Try to get them to come to the table by standing.
Everybody was gonna have to come to the table and state their name, so, I think there was one meeting I watched, there was about 30 people, or 30 different types of people talked, you didn't know who it was.
Yeah, it'd been during the March meeting, so.
Maybe the max, no, he was here at that one, weren't you?
I don't remember. The one I was watching online, there was a lot of people talking, I didn't, couldn't see who they were, now, some of them I knew by their voice, but there's other people in the public that don't remember this, so, 'cause I went to the school board meeting one night and down there you gotta state your name and your address, so...
I know some counties make people sign in when they come in.
Oh, exactly, I know that.
We had that not too long ago, that some people didn't even wanna state their names.
Yeah.
How do you deal with that?
I don't know how you do it, but I heard more phone call, I don't know what she does that much.
Yes.
It was caller ID.
As for the, yeah, as for the person that called in, we have caller IDs.
Yeah, and the requirement, they gotta state their name, they gotta state their name.
Don't wanna state your name?
Bye.
Yeah. Okay.
You heard anybody since?
Oh, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Garrick, you didn't have it, did you?
No, I didn't, I was just, just here, well, here to support.
Back us up, good enough.
Everybody read it.
I like having you here, I know that.
Everybody read the email from Ray?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, okay, we have a motion and a second, so call for a vote for the adjournment.
Aye.
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 We're done.
Got to run, but...